Raba Kistner, Inc.
Yes, this is Michael Hovar. We are available in here.
And last, Sepulveda Associates.
This is Robert Sepulveda, yes, we're present.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. It is 5:31 and it is October 26, 2021. I call this meeting to order. Roll call.
Esteban Angel, Chair.
Present.
Lupita Sepeda, President. Judge Mercure Martinez.
Present.
Jorge J.D. Delgado.
Present.
Mr. Chairman, you do have a form.
Thank you, Madam President. Item number three, Dr. Marisa Tijerina.
Yes, I'm actually defer the item to Mr. Cesar Vela, but also just to add to the two committee members that will also be helping with the scoring. We have Mr. Orlando Sepeda and Mr. Lude Valdez, who will also be assisting with the scoring, or their scoreboard will also be incorporated.
Okay. Thank you.
Good afternoon. Cesar Vela, Vice President of Finance. For the record, before we begin this process, I want to thank all the companies that submitted their qualifications for consideration this afternoon. And I'll briefly go over the process. Committee members, you received the complete packets that were submitted by the companies for review alongside the score sheet. One that is titled evaluator's score sheet. That is going to be the form that will be used to evaluate the qualifications of the companies. The criteria that we'll be looking at is staffing, relevant projects, planning, team organization, and financial capability. We do ask that the committee members enter the, or write down the name of the company that they evaluate in each individual form. It'll be one form per company, and then sign and date it at the bottom. So this afternoon, we're going to have the six companies that submitted their qualifications present to the committee. We have allotted 30 minutes per company, so we are asking that we stay within that timeframe. It's 15 minutes for the presentation and an additional 15 minutes for question and answers if needed. We will be doing the presentations in alphabetical order. First, the company will be Able City, followed by Armco Industries, Cabazo and Associates, Garza, Bamburger and Associates, Raba Kistner, and last, Sepulveda Associates, Inc. We are gonna be asking, and I'm not sure if that is controlled on our side or on their side, that the companies that are waiting will be, have to wait at one of our breakout rooms. Only the company that will be presenting will be allowed to stay. Once the companies complete their presentation, they can log off. At this point, we are not going to be disclosing the scores at this meeting. Those will be disclosed at the Thursday board meeting. So no decision will be made at this committee meeting. Again, you're welcome to stay if you want to, but again, we do have six companies that will be presenting tonight. So with that said, I will go ahead and ask Able City to present, make their presentation to the committee. If you do have a PowerPoint presentation, we'll go ahead and allow for you to share a screen. We do need to know, I guess, the names of the companies so that we can move them over to the breakout rooms.
Thank you.
So I can see Mr. Peña, Able City, Bricksolies, Vivian.
The blue backgrounds, everyone with a blue background.
Okay, those are Able City. The rest are?
Are you going to move us, or do we?
Victor is on our team also. Deanda with Synergy. I'm sure he's on others, but he's on our team.
Okay, well, we'll keep him on. We're ready for you guys. Frank, you guys can start the presentation.
I see one more name on there. Do you see that, Frank? Elizabeth Boca Negra.
She's with us. She's with the college.
Okay, great. I'm going to share my screen.
Just to confirm, you guys are ready to start, so I could put the clock time for 15 minutes?
Give me a couple, give us a couple of seconds.
Okay.
We're ready.
Hold on one second, Rick.
Yeah, sure.
I can't see, I can't see the presentation on my side. Okay. Hold on. Okay, all right. Thank you, guys. Yeah, we're ready to roll.
Okay, go ahead.
All right, thank you. So my name is Mario Peña. I'm a co-founding partner of Able City. Happy to present to you all tonight. We're honored to be, you know, part of the, you know, this next round of the interview process. So just a quick overview about our firm. You know, we are the convergence of Frank Architects, Inc., with over 30 years' experience working in Laredo, and Hickey Peña Architects with over 40 years of experience working in Laredo. Four years ago, we merged, and so we are now Able City. We think we are the largest firm in town, the firm with the most amount of employees and the deepest bench. But of note, you know, we'd like to point out that we are now six registered architects, three certified planners, and a certified economic developer on the team. The idea that we had when we merged is that we would give our clients integrated services that add value for every kind of project. So all of these perspectives, like planning and economic development, we also have sustainability experts on our team, really help fulfill the mission for our clients as well as ourselves. We've been working with the college for over six years now continuously. We've been delivering for the college and other projects successful buildings with this very dependable team that we, you know, now developed a relationship over, some of them over 15 years, the least of which we've been working with at least five years. So we're happy to count on them to continue to collaborate with LC. So this level of sustained work on higher education over 20 years of higher, over 20-plus higher education projects, really, it's sustained by this great team that you see here today. So Frank will dive into that a little bit more in the next few slides. Frank?
Thank you, Mario. We'd like to start with, we know your campuses, of course, the main campus as well as Laredo South. We completed, as you know, or most of you know, the Health Science Center last year, and we also are currently working on your diesel lab expansion on that campus. And I'd like to just briefly take you through the Health Science Center, which is our next slide. We approach every project, and we like to use this project as an example, with health and wellness in mind. In addition to our other areas of concentration, our holistic approach to design, health and wellness is a big part of it, and that includes active design. We fuse the idea of moving through our space to keep people well, and we do that with strategies that are developed by the Center for Active Design, which we participate in and we're members of, as well as the idea of enabling health and wellness. You know, and everything from the indoor spaces to the outdoor spaces, to the quality of space, and to provide basically architectural incentives to keep people moving. And that's a big, big part of our practice. And that really relates to what we refer to as combating chronic illness and how we integrate those strategies into our design. We've been doing that for a number of years. Our next slide illustrates how we have to pivot back to viral and infectious disease, as we all know, as we wound up a few years ago, beginning with the pandemic. And the really good thing about having been part of the Center for Active Design, as well as Fit Well ambassadors, which basically work with the Center for Disease Control and getting public health information, and the Center for Active Design, which converts that data into design solutions. We were able to administer it and even help Laredo College with bringing back your students and your faculty and your staff for a safer return. And again, because of the design and the configuration of the Health Science Center, it was really an easy thing to assist with, and we really are very proud of the work we've done with you at both campuses on providing instructions and certainly some strategies on a safer return. And we're also very proud of the Health Science Center. It is basically a project that was during the bond, was advertised with a $29 million budget. We were able to bring the project in for about $24 million. And we're also really proud of the building, as well as you all having the number-one nursing program certainly around in the country. And we're really, really excited to be able to have participated with your staff, with all of the different Health Science Center groups that we worked with, we worked very closely with, and just really happy to be part of that. And we thank you for that opportunity to work on this project. Rick?
So the next slide, we're currently also working at the South Campus on the automotive and diesel lab expansion, as well as the new CDL driving pad. You know, both projects will serve to expand the current curriculum for both the truck driving school and the transportation technology program that you guys have down there at the South Campus. The driving pad project was recently approved and should start construction this year. I believe the approved price was a little over $960,000. The pad itself is fairly large and will allow for better training. I think currently you guys are training in your parking lot. So this will really, really serve to expand that program moving forward in the future. We also did the transportation technology expansion. The building itself is about a 23,000 square foot expansion, and we're really looking to expand the diesel engine mechanics curriculum, as well as creating a quick service automotive repair. There'll also be expansion of the welding shop and the collision center. We're currently still reviewing the construction documents at this time on that project. Moving forward, we also are very familiar with your Fort Macintosh campus, having done various projects there, including the Sierra Rosa Science Complex. We did a small project there at the Marevillo Gym, as well as the Guadalupe and Lidia Martinez Fine Arts Building, as well as coordinated with Hallen Construction, the campus waterline project. The Sierra Rosa Science Complex really took the Dr. Leonides Sierra Rosa Building and the Joaquin Sierra Rosa Science Laboratory Building and created this complex with the expansion. The total square footage out there is about 88,000 square feet, and this whole project came in at about $16.4 million. The expansion included new faculty offices, as well as six new labs, as well as six new lecture rooms. The labs feature state-of-the-art, energy-efficient equipment and ventilation, as well as plenty of open student study areas, as you can see from the photographs. The building design does revolve around the central courtyard area, which allows for plenty of natural light to come into all areas of the building, as well as we're able to preserve that large majestic tree that you have there on site. It's a very beautiful area there in that courtyard. With that, we'll move on to our integrated services, and I'll pass it back to Mario.
I'm on mute. Thanks, Rick. So yeah, so we have been working to build up the capacity in our firm now for a few years to give our clients a better experience in having that one point of contact with many of the services we provide. So we've obviously, can you go back to the slide, sorry, Rick? We've obviously concentrated on, you know, on improving our response through architecture. But urban planning has, you know, our focus now for a few years as well, building out a full planning staff, like we mentioned with three certified planners. Now, you may say, what, how does that relate to LC in a sort of a closed campus environment? But especially in the downtown campus. Working and collaborating with the context around you is, we think, is key to the success of the campus. Giving your students a downtown experience eventually, as we plan toward it and looking outward, is part of, I think, the work we should be doing in any downtown setting. Now, in addition to that, we have added laser scanning services to our capabilities. And as you know, we have, you know, many, many years of proven success working with the CMAR delivery method that you are favoring to use nowadays, as well as your traditional design and build methods and design build methods. One last thing on that slide, Rick, sorry about that. We just want to say that our core belief is that reusing existing buildings is the best for the environment. It's the best use of investment, and so we have focused our efforts in really knowing how to do adaptive reuse well, especially in historic buildings, again, very relevant in the downtown campus. Now, beginning with how we start to engage with you as a client, we allow, we allocate ample time to meet with staff and faculty to develop a complete understanding of the needs we're responding to. Anyone who experienced the work we did at the Sierra Rosa Science Campus can see how robust that was. We spent months trying, making sure that all the faculty and staff had input in what the building needed to be for them to be successful in their, in their teaching duties. Now, after programming and after we interview staff, we respond with helpful visuals that illustrate the critical spatial relationships that will enable effective use of spaces. Early on, right after next slide, we make sure that there's a clear understanding of what a building will be after it's developed. So the visualization on your left was developed in 2017, and the one on the right is a picture of the building. So as you can tell, it's very close. We did that rendering before we did construction documents, you know, just a couple of months after the design was finalized. So you all were able to anticipate and respond with quality input for us to adjust the design according. Next slide. So we have a robust quality assurance, quality control process that we have borrowed from all of our work with major national firms. We've adopted it fully into our firm. And so what that means is that we have trigger points, milestones, where we stop work and we we ask all of our consultants and our team to check the work before moving on to the next phase of the process. All of that is documented, and the client has the opportunity to chime in also at these critical milestones throughout the entire project. Next slide. Obviously, very critical and public work, and any job is budget control. Along with all of these milestone points, which we actually identified three or four of them at least in every project, we go back and check on how we're doing on the budget to make sure we're communicating to you all that the decisions you make are impacting the budget, if they have an impact, and we're monitoring the market in terms of construction costs on a weekly basis. During construction, we've developed a process that's been developed through years of working with LC with the particular contractors you have experience with. And so this, our process that we've developed through construction is proven. And so we've developed it specifically to be more responsive to LC. Next slide. Next is commissioning. After the closeout, we are still here to make sure that the building is meeting your design expectations. So we have an entire process that makes sure that the building is compliant with all of the intended design goals. And we do this through teaming early on and setting expectations with all of the parties that are involved. This includes advanced systems performance calibration and measurement, the training of maintenance personnel, and the continued communication beyond occupancy. So ultimately, how we measure success is directly tied to your mission. So next, Diana will conclude with our commitments to people and planet that are linked to your success and ours.
You got a couple of seconds to wrap it up.
How much time?
We're doing roll.
I think they froze.
We're committed to be stewards of the climate and of prosperity. And you can see this through a public commitment that we have made with the Council, Council of Inclusive Capitalism with the Vatican. We're one of 164 companies worldwide that have made these public commitments, and they align with LCC's. You can, next slide, Rick. Institutional goals. By our commitment, we help you, we're dynamically aligned to help you carry out your goals, and they're aligned with the United Nations Sustainable Development Goals. And we do this, next slide, through an interdisciplinary approach that's holistic. And we become advocates for you while serving all stakeholders, including students at Laredo College.
That's time.
We'll leave it on for questions.
Yes. Colleagues, any questions? Judge, any questions? I have a couple. How many projects locally, especially locally, have you met? Have you met the timeline, you know, whenever those projects have been, have been actually, you know, awarded to you guys to be able to say, you know, you meet the timeline that is given by the entities?
Do you want me to take this, Rick?
Yeah, go ahead.
Right, well, okay, so we have, we have a database of projects that, you know, in 30 years, we have quite a long database, so it's hard to give you a number right off the top of my head. What I can tell you is that we have always been successful. I think our track record is 100% in, and not in saying that we, that that the initial deadline is met every single time, and that, because in collaboration with the client, sometimes there is discovered that the needs change, and so then the timeline changes as well. So just to qualify your question, I would say we meet the established deadlines of the projects on, especially on educational projects, where there is a need to open an educational facility at a certain scheduled time. We have a track record of fulfilling that. I think I can say 100% of the time, yeah.
How about under budget? What do you guys consider being your biggest project that you can say has come at a much under-budget price?
Well, I mean, I think, I think we can look at the Sierra Rosa Science Complex. You know, that project was budgeted at $16.4 million, and if I remember correctly, we didn't use all of the contingency, so there was some money there left over towards the end. So, and I think with most of our projects, we've done pretty good about keeping them under budget so that, you know, the owner can realize a little bit of those cost savings at the end of a project. I don't know if Mario or Frank want to add anything to that.
Well, I think that the other example is the project in the South Campus, the nursing center project. Exactly.
Okay. Any other questions, committee members? Rusty, go ahead.
Mr. Chairman and board members, I think it's important to point out that the process that the board is following to select an architect is the process under the Professional Services Procurement Act, and that's actually legally required, and it doesn't really permit an inquiry into cost or price-associated factors. So basically, what it says is that at this step, that you address qualifications. And I don't think we went into at all price of what they would charge for services, but I would just, out of an abundance of caution, probably not address too much money issues.
Okay, not at all.
Thank you.
Okay, there's no other questions? No? No, that's it. Thank you, Able City.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mr. Jones. Who else will be joining you?
No one. I'm by myself today.
Oh, okay, all right. So then, I believe we're, just give us a couple of seconds, and we will be ready for you, okay?
Okay, thank you.
The, the next company that we have is Armco, uh, and we have Mr. Jones that will be presenting to the committee. Mr. Jones, floor's yours.
Thank you very much and, uh, good afternoon to all of you. I'm going to try to share my screen here for a brief PowerPoint. If you bear with me a second.
Just let me know when you're ready, sir, so we could just go ahead and start the time clock. You're gonna have 15 minutes.
Okay, you should be able to see my screen now.
No, we don't. Okay, that's coming up now.
There we go.
Got it?
Yes, sir. Are you ready to go?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead.
Well, thank you for having us this afternoon. My name is Travis Jones and I represent Armco Industries Incorporated. Armco is a 30-year-old architectural and engineering firm that we specialize in the roof and building envelope consulting. Our founder came from the world of, uh, maintaining public roof systems, uh, on existing buildings, primarily in the public sector such as school districts, colleges, universities, municipalities. And he soon realized that roofs and building envelopes were not being designed or installed well enough to be maintained very effectively or have any long-term lifecycle for the owner. Therefore, uh, Armco was founded. Our design team can provide assessments, design and quality assurance for the roofing and the building envelope for both new and existing construction projects. We provided specifications, drawings, details and quality assurance for over 2 million square feet of roofing and over 7,000 projects for roof and building envelope solutions. We provide our services for both new and existing constructions. Oftentimes we work as the prime, uh, architect and engineer for the owner. In the event, say, it's a re-roof project or existing construction on a building envelope issue. Uh, and also we, we work as a sub consultant as part of a, uh, another architect or engineer's, uh, design team, say for new construction. And again, uh, the biggest part of our clientele are public entities. Like I said earlier, school districts, colleges, universities, city, county, state agencies. These are the folks that tend to hold on to their buildings for the long term. It's not uncommon for these, uh, owners to have buildings for 30, 40 and 50 years. So therefore our, uh, perspective on this is to design a system that will perform for the building owner, lower their maintenance, uh, cost and give them, uh, the longest lifecycle possible, uh, for the life of their building. Through our experience and expertise, uh, you know, we're able to design roofing systems and building envelope systems that can last as much as 25 to 30 years nowadays. That was not the case not too many years ago. What our objective is for the owner is to work closely with the owner and understand their needs and develop long-term solutions to your roof and building envelope, uh, issues, problems you may be having, problems you may not know that you have. We strive to lower maintenance costs through proper assessment and design. And we're always looking at what is the backup for the first line of defense on a building? And we try to design from a maintenance standpoint. We know that, uh, public entities, maintenance personnel, no fault of their own, don't, simply don't have the experience that, uh, folks like us have in, in being able to diagnose properly and assess what the issue is and, and come up with a solution. We also assist the owner in developing long-term planning and budgeting strategies. We do this with a program that we call a roof management asset, uh, program. Where we go and take a look at all your facilities and determine what their existing conditions are, what your future holds for those buildings. Are you planning to perhaps demolish any or turn any over, uh, to some other type of use? And develop strategies for bringing these buildings up to date and give you a roadmap for what your anticipated budget cost could be for maintaining these buildings or possible replacement of these buildings. And we extend this information out for the next 15 years or so. And it's very helpful to building owners when they're developing their annual budgets for facilities. Our success is based on service expertise and performance. We don't do a lot of fancy advertising. We have, uh, we've been in the business for over 30 years. We rely a lot on our performance and word of mouth from, uh, our clients who have really benefited from what we have to offer. Service nowadays is a lost art, it seems. And at Armco, we pride ourselves on responding quickly and effectively regardless of the size of the problem. Whatever your concern is, it's our concern. Expertise, uh, we have over 400 years combined experience between our design professionals, our architects or engineer, our consultants, our field technicians. There's not a whole lot that, uh, we can't, haven't seen or can't handle. Performance at Armco, uh, we do what we say we're going to do. That's not always the case in some circles, but performance is why our clients keep coming back and asking us to help them solve their problems. Just a brief rundown of the scope of services that we offer is forensic roof and building envelope analysis and testing, non-destructive thermographic imaging, both handheld and drone technology, uh, moisture sensing, roof construction and condition assessments, uh, determine the nomenclature through core cuts of roofing systems. We can open up wall systems, uh, determine if there, if roof and waterproofing is maintainable or non-maintainable. And what can be expected, uh, for the different options you may encounter. Building veneer analysis, uh, we can help establish budgets and prioritize roofing and building envelope needs. Design the best roofing and waterproof system for the CLD and generate project document specification, CAD drawing. We can conduct, uh, pre-bid conference meetings, we help evaluate proposals, assist at pre-construction conferences, some middle review, provide quality assurance during the construction and then provide punch list and review contractor pay requests, the ASBILs and then review the closeout documents with you. We, uh, assemble our project documents using CAD and both Revit, uh, drafting. This is just a sample of what some of our drawings look like. When we're working with another architect as a sub consultant, we work closely with them and so that our documents flow with their documents. You won't see any difference between, between ours and theirs except for what our logo is on, on the title block or what have you. And we tend, we pride ourselves on knowing the devil is in the details. And so we're often looking at non-typical, um, details on a roof systems. And this is especially important when you have older facilities that have had additions added to them. Pretty much anybody can figure out what the basic details are, but what we're always trying to strive for is where is the problem going to occur? Where is the building owner most likely to have a problem with this building? And we address that by properly detailing these drawings and making sure that they're on the construction documents so that the contractor can see them and understand them. We also provide our details in an isometric, uh, format such as you see here. A 3D view of this, we believe, gives the contractor a better viewpoint and a better understanding of how the various components come together and the sequencing of those components during construction assembly. Finally, our specifications are CSI formatted. Again, when we're working, uh, as a sub consultant for another architect, we assimilate our specifications to look just like their specifications. So there's no, nothing different. When we are the prime working for the owner, sometimes, uh, owners have their own format for specifications. So we can format our specifications to make them look however you want them to look. That's it in a nutshell. Uh, I look forward to hearing your questions and hopefully we look forward to serving you.
Thank you, sir. Uh, committee members, any questions? No. No, we don't have any questions currently.
Okay, very good.
Thank you.
I appreciate, I appreciate your time and appreciate your opportunity. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Thank you.
Thank you.
Bye-bye.
Good afternoon, Mr. Lewis. Um, is anybody else, uh, joining the, are we, do we have everybody here? We have Cesar Sostre. I'm not sure how to pronounce.
We got some more people that are rejoining.
Okay.
Cesar Sostre is present.
Uh, several people are saying that their screen still says that the host will let them in soon. We're looking for Gabriela Rodriguez. Jorge Flores.
Okay. We have, uh, Jorge Flores and Gabriela Rodriguez joining us. Okay, is that the complete team, Mr. Lewis?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Committee members, are we ready?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, Mr. Lewis, the floor's yours.
Just let me know when you're ready, sir. Uh, we'll give you your 15 minutes. I'll start the clock.
Alrighty, uh, well, thank you for having us. I'll go ahead and share screen. Can you all read that?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Well, again, thank you for having us. Uh, my name is Roy Lewis with Garza Bomberger and Associates Architects. Uh, I will have, uh, uh, other members of our team introduce themselves.
Yes, my name is Jorge Flores, uh, with Garza Bomberger, one of the partners.
Hello, my name is Cesar Sostre, project architect.
Gabriela Rodriguez, senior project manager.
Take off to the Z, project manager.
Well, we, we do appreciate you all, uh, having us with you this evening and, uh, we'll proceed on. Just a little bit about ourselves. Garza Bomberger and Associates has been around for, we're celebrating our 103rd year this year, this next year. And, uh, the firm started in 1919. And then over the years, uh, the, the name has just kind of, uh, progressed to where it is today. Started as Phelps and Dewees Architects, went to Phelps, Dewees and Simmons, Phelps and Simmons, Phelps, Simmons and Garza, then Phelps, Garza, Bomberger, and then presently it's Garza, Bomberger and Associates. We have been around for a lot, a lot of years. Uh, one distinction we have is that we can honestly say that we've gone through two pandemics as a firm, uh, including the Spanish flu, uh, back in the early 1900s. We have had, uh, liability insurance, uh, since 1957 with no claims in over 60 years. That's not full screen? Our, our firm, um, works in central and south Texas only. We only service the areas that we can, uh, get to on a regular basis. That's why you don't see us in the other towns like Houston or Fort Worth or Dallas or even, uh, Amarillo or El Paso. Well, we, we only go where we can actually service the project. The vast majority of ours is it within the San Antonio area, but we are currently working in Eagle Pass, uh, and down in Corpus Christi as well. Uh, again, I am the, uh, one of the partners of the firm. We've only had 11 partners in the history of the firm. We believe in controlling and having gradual transitions into ownership in- instead of, uh, bringing people in from outside the office. I actually started with the firm in, uh, 1975 as a summer intern and, uh, progressed through, become partner, uh, prior to the 2000 year. Uh, Jorge Flores has been a partner for how many years, Jorge?
Uh, five years now.
Okay.
But I've been with the company 15 years.
Roy, I'm sorry to just, uh, just a quick thing, y- you don't show the slides right now.
Oh, you're not seeing the slides?
No, sir.
How do I, uh, I'm sharing one. Okay, just a minute, please. I'm sorry.
We have young people in our office for the new technology.
We could see some of, one slide, but I don't know if he was changing slides.
Yeah, I, I don't know what's happening here. It's not, uh, resume slideshow?
We could see one slide when you started.
Okay, let me, uh, let's get back, let's do it. We'll have to go with what we have. Let's see here. Can we do PDA?
Yeah.
Let's see. Nothing's working.
Try it now, try this one.
Okay.
Now you have to share your screen.
Can we, uh, can you see the screen that says team?
No, we're looking at you.
No.
Oh, my goodness gracious, uh.
Would you like me to do it?
Let me see here, just a second. Okay, where, where is it? I'm gonna switch over to a par- a, uh. Okay, now can we share this?
Yes.
How, how do we move that? Can you all see that?
Yes.
Yes, we can.
Yes, we can see.
Okay.
Okay. Let me see here. Okay, I'm sorry, I apologize.
Okay, you were, sir, you were at, at eight minutes left. I'm just gonna put you at 12 for those additional four minutes. So you'll have, we'll have 12 minutes to, for your presentation.
Okay, uh, moving on. Thank you. Uh, moving on to the, uh, the, the, the organization, I will be the principal in charge. Thank you. Uh, moving on to the, uh, the, the, the organization, I will be the principal in charge on this. I have Jorge Flores with me because we always have a backup partner, uh, that's aware of whatever projects we are working on. The, the other partner also is in charge of quality control and reviewing the documents prior to them going out. The project coordinator will be Cesar Sostre, uh, as the project manager. He'll be the main point of contact. And then, uh, supporting him would be, uh, Pega, uh, and Krishna Tamakar, and Marissa Dumas. Uh, Marissa is our construction administration, uh, document specialist, and she takes over, once we get into C A, she, uh, she handles all of the, uh, the, the dollars of the, she reviews the, the pay apps. She gets with the consultants, she gets with the contractors to make sure that the paper flow, uh, proceeds in an orderly manner. Gabriela is one of our designers. Uh, she, she's in charge of several large projects as, as the, um, project designer, and, uh, so we would bring her in on some, uh, issues where we're working with, um, new construction, a- as well as renovations. Uh, we, we propose on our consulting team, uh, our S C R, consulting engineers as a structural engineer. Uh, it's interestingly enough, we, we list Armco Industries as our roof and building envelope consultant. Moitari and Ramirez, uh, engineers for our civil and D B R engineering consultant as our M E P engineers. Uh, when we get into cost estimating, we would be using A G C M. Services provided. Uh, we do the full services for the client, uh, including any pre-design, which may include programming or master planning, uh, feasibility studies or lifecycle costing, uh, scheduling or budgeting. Architectural, of course, we do the, the full service again with, uh, uh, constructing, uh, doing the, uh, construction documents. We do work in, uh, B M, uh, for our, our, our projects. Uh, we can look at sustainable design consulting as well as, uh, all of the basic, um, services that you might have as part of a project. Uh, and then, of course, during bidding and construction, we always analyze the, the bids and work with the owner on that and help prepare the contracts and, uh, look at, uh, cost control and quality assurance during it. We'll also assist in the warranted closeouts and the permitting, uh, coordination. Uh, as, as old as our, we have worked with a lot of clients. Uh, we, we virtually work for almost every K through twelve in the San Antonio area, but additionally, we work for several higher eds, including, uh, the A and M system, U T system, uh, including U T S A, uh, currently working with Alamo Colleges District as well. Uh, a little closer to home for you all, uh, we were in Laredo. We, uh, we did work on the Western Hemisphere Trade Center at Texas A and M Laredo, uh, as well as, uh, the Mercedes-Benz, uh, tech project where we came in and did a facilities assessment, uh, for several of their buildings. I understand that, uh, site has, uh, re, uh, closed, but, uh, we did quite a bit of, uh, facilities assessment for them. Moving on, one of our, uh, clients has been the University of Texas, uh, at San Antonio. And, uh, just to give you an idea, uh, we originally worked on the, uh, expansion to the university center, um, of which we then later, with, uh, the change in the, the master plan by the state of Texas for all, uh, building design for the U T system, uh, the Rec Wellness Center and Health Clinic were one of the first buildings on the U T S A campus to implement and, uh, the tripod tied, type windows that were, uh, similar to the original U T campus. Uh, we then went on to do the applied engineering building, uh, which it, uh, also incorporated these new design standards for the campus. Um, Region Twenty, uh, Educational Services has been one of our clients from the beginning. We've worked for them for over forty years and designed all of their buildings. Uh, we are currently, uh, under phase scheduled, uh, working on a renovation of all the buildings. Uh, Pega, maybe you might mention a little bit about the, um, uh, Living Sciences Building.
Um, yes, sir. So, Living Science Building, it works like a kind of library. Uh, the teachers, educators come there, uh, to check out the reptiles. Um, they take them to the classrooms and, uh, teach about them. Whenever they're done, they bring back the animal to the center. Next slide, please.
Uh, because cost was a consideration, that building is actually a metal building that, uh, we enhanced the appearance of it, so it is a very nice, attractive building. Uh, A C D is one of our clients as well. Uh, we've actually worked for A C D going on, uh, probably seventy years. Uh, did many of the early SAC buildings. Uh, currently, we were, we're working with them on the Eastside Education Training Center. And Pega, tell us a little about that.
Uh, it's a, uh, this job happened to be in phases as well. The first phase, uh, is ready for substantial completion. Uh, we brought up the building, the main building to the code, and for the second phase, we will renovate the whole campus and we will do the master plan.
And, and additionally, that building was done under federal, uh, uh, grants that were given to them. Uh, so we stayed within the budget of that federal grant on the first phase. Uh, tell us about Maverick County.
Maverick County, uh, tax office is a job that is almost done. Uh, this is a fifteen thousand square foot of existing building. We turned it to the tax office and the food pantry. And the next job, Maverick County Fairground, uh, we finished the schematic design, uh, phase, and this will have the, uh, federal grant as well. Um, hmm, this is mostly working as a community center, not only a facility for the county. And then the Susan Hall Community Health Clinic, uh, this is a clinic we did for suicide I S C. The very important po, point for this project is the fact that district did not have any kind of hospital or clinic in their boundary, so whatever happened, they had to go to the downtown, uh, San Antonio. Uh, the money came from a charity. We raised one million dollar architect and contractor. Everyone helped to create this facility.
Hey, just to give you an idea, we do work with, uh, larger institutions as well. Uh, thi, this is a project that Rehe Children's Cancer Research In, Institute was, uh, part of the University of Texas Health Science Center, uh, that we did. That, uh, was very contemporary at the time. Uh, we also work for A and M. Uh, we, in addition to the Western, uh, Hemisphere Trade Center that we showed you at, uh, A and M Laredo, uh, we did the New Student Center for Texas A and M at Prairie View as well as the Bayside Parking Garage for the University of, uh, excuse me, Texas A and M University at Corpus Christi as well. Uh, we do work for Texas State University, and we did, uh, the McCoy Business Building, um, for Angelo State. We worked on the Houston Heart, uh, University Center that they have there, as well as the Juneel Center, which was their, uh, five thousand-seat, uh, multipurpose arena, uh, on that project. Uh, commercially speaking, we're showing this because we do quite a bit of space planning. Uh, Garza Bomberger did the original Broadway Bank Building back in nineteen sixty-eight, and the, uh, bank outgrew itself. We came back in with the new operations building that was constructed, uh, uh, for the expansion of the bank, and we did all of the space planning inside it as well. Um, one of our crown jewels is the Texas State Aquarium. Uh, we worked on, uh, this project for the last forty years. Uh, I was actually, uh, working for the firm back in nineteen seventy-nine and seventy-eight when, uh, we started preliminary concepts, uh, where the, the aquarium actually was, uh, scheduled to be put on the People Street Tea Head in Corpus. Uh, since then, we, uh, recently, our most recent expansion was the Caribbean Journey, uh, which utilized a four hundred thousand gallon, uh, tank for sharks and the use of, uh, long-span Plexiglas. Uh, and, and there was also a four-D theater that we incorporated into it. Um, some of our clients, uh, w, we've actually teamed up with, uh, larger firms, uh, for large projects. The University Health Center, uh, was an eight hundred million dollar project, which we collaborated with, uh, Perkins and Wills. Uh, they, uh, for our portion of the work, we did over a hundred million dollars worth of, uh, the, the construction work in this, or design work, excuse me, and, uh, including the sky tower in this image. Uh, one thing we do, and we do quite a bit of, is, uh, that we, uh, have phased renovations of existing campuses. Gabriela, maybe you can explain a little bit about Burbank.
Yeah, so for Burbank, we were hired to do additions and renovations to the existing campus, but after assessment, um, most of their existing buildings were from nineteen fifty, and all the budget would have gone towards trying to bring them up to the new era. So instead, we found a way to replace the entire campus, almost the entire campus except for the athletic department, with a new three-story building, um, over two hundred thousand square feet, and it has, uh, new administration, uh, library, kitchen, cafeteria, and all the academic spaces.
Can you go ahead and wrap it up, please?
Okay. Uh, there were one Churchill High School and, uh, Roosevelt High School were also completely phased, um, projects as well that occurred over a five-year period of time. Uh, we, uh, one thing we want to stress is what sets us apart, and that, that is our foundation. Uh, we, we treat architecture as a profession, not as a job. Uh, we've had over a hundred years' worth of, uh, work and design, uh, over ninety years in K-12 and higher ed. Uh, we have real individual experience here. The work we present will be accomplished by the team that's sitting before you. Uh, we, we, uh, have a stability in the business and project management that includes good decision-making, uh, reflected in our services and in our business model. Uh, and we have investments returned through the community.
Thank you, Mr. Lewis.
We appreciate, uh, the time.
Thank you.
Now I'll go ahead and, any questions, Judge?
No questions. I'm impressed with your presentation. Excellent.
Thank you.
No, no questions. Thank you.
No questions. Uh, thank you, Mr. Lewis. Appreciate your time.
Well, we, we appreciate the consideration. We look forward to trying to work with you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lewis.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Who's, who's next?
Uh, Mr. Cavassos.
Cavassos.
Uh, Mr. Cavassos is some, uh, any bus, any, anybody else, uh, joining you?
Sergio Vela. And, um, Sean Rodriguez from Energy and Victor De Anda.
Mr. Cavassos, the floor is yours.
Mr. Cavassos, you have, you have fifteen minutes. Whenever you're ready, please let us know so we could start the time.
Okay, I'm ready.
You ready? Here we go. Fifteen minutes.
Let me share my screen. Can you see the Cavassos Architects logo?
Uh, no, sir, we don't.
Don't?
Or the logo behind you, or like the PowerPoint?
Um, trying to share my screen, um...
There you go. Oh.
Such a beautiful little girl.
We see your little girl.
Oh, okay. Uh, do you see it now, Cavassos Architects?
Yes. You got fifteen minutes, Mr. Cavassos. Go ahead.
Okay. Uh, good evening, everybody. On the, excuse me, on the building committee, um, Mr. Rangel, Ms. Epeda, Judge Martinez, and Mr. Delgado, thank you all for your time. I know you all have a long night, uh, ahead of you, so I'll try to make this as straightforward as possible. Uh, I'm Memo Cavassos with Cavassos Architects, and, um, I'm going to introduce you to the design team that we're proposing for, uh, these professional services. So I'll just give you a little background on some of us. Um, I, uh, am the owner of Cavassos Architects since two thousand fifteen, when, uh, my father retired and he, uh, sold the company to me. I've been working here since, uh, two thousand two as an architect. And, um, I also have, uh, on our staff, Sergio Vela. He's a registered architect that joined us in two thousand nineteen, and he has fifteen years of experience. Um, Gabriel Camarena is also on our project team, but he is not able to join because of a personal issue. Uh, we also have our structural engineer on the team, Mr. Victor De Anda, who you might have already met on some of the other presentations, and John Rodriguez, uh, and his brother Sean, who are representing energy engineering. They're mechanical, electrical, and plumbing. So, uh, I'd like to explain to you why we think Cavassos Architects would be a good choice or the best choice for you for these projects. And I've kind of listed a few bullet points that, uh, I can expound on during the presentation. Um, our, first of all, our design ability demonstrated through our past work, which I'll show you some examples of. Um, our relative project experience. In other words, we, we've done a lot of, uh, educational projects and renovation projects, which is what I understand some of these, this work is going to, going to entail. Um, also, we have an existing relationship with Laredo College. We've been doing work for you all since two thousand fifteen, uh, mostly on the south campus, but recently we got awarded, um, two projects, the Law Enforcement Training Center and the Lamar Bunny Vergara Environmental Science Center renovations. So we look forward to working on those projects with you as well. Um, I have to mention that we're one hundred percent local, uh, in terms of the, the architecture. Uh, so your tax dollars will stay in Laredo if you do end up deciding to choose us. And, um, we like to emphasize exceptional customer service. Um, I know architects can be, you know, we can be divas sometimes, and, uh, we think it's our project, but, uh, we, our philosophy is, um, you know, we want to do some great designs, but we also are, this is a service that we're providing. And so we just always keep that in mind when we're working for you. Also, it's important to meet deadlines, both design and construction. Uh, as you know, time is money, and especially right now with all the uncertainty going on, uh, because of COVID, uh, I think it's even more important that we keep that in mind. Um, so I'd like to show you some of our more recent experience within the last six years or so. Um, one of the big projects we've done, which I'm sure you've seen, is Nixon High School. That was a thirty-four million dollar project that was finished in two thousand fifteen. Two thousand sixteen, we still were working on, on some of the components of that project. We're currently, uh, working on Kawaz Elementary. That's gonna be a new elementary school, essentially, seventy-five thousand square feet. That's going to replace the old school that was there, and that's a sixteen point four million dollar project. And currently under construction as well, uh, are the Nixon High School Vocational and R O T C projects. Those are the images on the, um, upper right. Uh, auto shops, cosmetology, carpentry, and some various other trades. We also do, um, other types of work besides educational. Uh, we've done the Texas Community Bank, the main building on McPherson. We've done the Texas Community Bank, the main building on McPherson, which I'm sure you've seen at some point. And recently, last year, we completed the annex building, which is located catty corner from that. It's like a little sister building to that big facility. We also do some multifamily residential. We're currently working on a nine million dollar project that's into the design phase. And we also do owners representative work, which is a little different. I know it doesn't really apply to this RFQ, but I just wanted to show you some of the different types of work that we do. But really, we specialize in educational projects. We have forty-one plus educational projects in Laredo, and that includes five higher education projects. And I won't go through naming all of them, but a lot of them you've probably seen here in town for LISD or UISD. We also, I want to talk about our renovation experience because I suspect that's going to be the nature of some of these jobs. And we have done some renovation projects for you. Two separate renovation projects at Billy Hall, which is at the south campus. That involved a big variety of different things, including building some commercial kitchens for your culinary arts program. We redid the registrar lobby area. You can see it here on your, your upper right. We did some air conditioning, lighting changes, some changes to the exterior of the building. We added in a food vendor here on the first floor, and we actually re-roofed the building too. So we are familiar with doing these kind of renovation projects for you. And we also do a lot of this for UISD. We've been there on, on staff, internal, not on staff, but internal architect for all of their renovation projects since two thousand fifteen. And we just renewed our contract for another two years. So we are familiar with the way these kind of projects go. And I just wanted to provide some larger photographs of some of these projects I was talking about. This is a rendering of what the Kawas Elementary School will look like. That should be completed in twenty twenty-three, hopefully. One of the features of this school was, we have two courtyards. We like to encourage through our design for students to get some fresh air and, and spend some time outside. I know it's hot in Laredo, so it's a challenge, but we succeeded in doing that at Nixon High School. If you've driven by Nixon, you've seen some construction, and that is the vocational and ROTC projects that we're currently doing. This is what the interior looks like in the cosmetology slash barber shop area, which turned out pretty neat. They're excited about it. And then I'm showing a photograph of Nixon, which we're very proud of, and the owner was very happy with. I'll talk a little bit about what else we can bring to the table. We, we're a boutique firm, so, you know, we have a smaller staff than some of the other companies. But I think it's a benefit because all of us get involved in all of the projects. And so we don't just get a project and, you know, hand it off to, to somebody else here. If you were to call me or, or Sergio about any of our jobs, we'd be able to discuss them with you. So we all get involved with them, and one of the other things we do is utilize technology. It's important for communication, to communicate to you what our design ideas are. Otherwise, you know, you could be looking at a bunch of lines on a sheet. Or we could try to be verbally communicating something to you, but it doesn't always come across. So we use technology by doing renderings. And we like to do fly-throughs or walkthroughs of the site. The advantage of the videos is you get a lot more sense of scale of the project, of the way you approach it, what it feels like to walk through the building or outside the building versus an, an image, which is effective as well, but you know, an image is static. So it doesn't tell the whole story of the building. And so we virtually model all these buildings in every project. And we have software where you're able to actually in real time navigate through the building. Kind of like a video game, I guess you could say. As long as we've done our job with the modeling, you should be able to experience the building with this software. And so I just wanted to show you an example of that. We also utilize our drone to show progress of a building. Sometimes you can't get the, the whole picture of the building from eye level. And it's an effective way of communicating to you and your staff, you know, what's going on at the job site and letting you know that we're on top of things. I've got three minutes left, so I'm gonna kind of speed through these. The quality control is very important in design, mainly because you want to eliminate conflicts and any problems that might come down the road. So we have a, a system here for quality control. And what I mean is reviewing the drawings and making sure that everything that's in the drawings is as correct as we can make it. And it's all consistent with each other. So we have an internal checklist that we've developed, and that's just through experience, really. We add to it as we go along. And we review the project at certain milestones. We use technology in the cloud to coordinate with our engineers. And we cross-reference our specifications to make sure everything that the contractor is going to provide is what we intended. And I'll speak a little bit about our presence at the job site, which is just as important as a design. Sometimes more important. It's very important, and we stress that we have a presence at the job site. And if Sergio is the project manager for the site, he'll be there minimum once a week. Lately, it's, you know, maybe two or three times a week. We have regular meetings at the site, depending on how often you all require it, either weekly or bi-weekly. And we take minutes and issue the minutes out to everybody. That way, everybody's on the same page, and there's a record of everything that was discussed. And like I said, we regularly visit the site. Even if Sergio is going, and I fully trust him to, to take care of everything, I still go just because I like to go, get, you know, keep a handle on what's going on and, and make sure that I don't see anything that we need to address. And we also issue weekly site reports with photographs for you. So there's a sort of a paper trail of everything that's going on. And we feel like we have a good system. And if you were to call any of our past clients, you would see that they're very happy with our customer service and our presence. And I'm gonna have to speed through this slide, but most of our work are repeat clients. LISD, UISD, Laredo College, and Texas Community Bank. We've been working for all those entities for five years, sometimes ten, fifteen, twenty years. And the reason being is our design approach, we're very flexible. We feel like we have empathy, construction savvy, our presence on the job site, communication with all parties, the contractor, you, the owner, and amongst ourselves, and reliability. We're gonna meet your budget, your deadlines, and we're gonna be available to you for the duration of the project. And this last slide is the same as the first slide we looked at. I just wanted to hammer home these points. So with that, I think we're at fifteen minutes.
Yes, sir, you are, Mr. Cavazos. Any question?
None.
Judge?
I don't have any questions. Thank you.
Uh, great job, Mr. Cavazos. Thank you for your presentation.
Okay, that's it?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I love that little baby.
I know. So cute.
So we're doing, which one, Mr. Vela?
Raba Kissner.
Raba?
And the last one would be Sepulveda.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Sepulveda, the last one now, correct?
Yes, sir. Good evening, sir. Is, is there anybody else from your team that will be joining?
I'm sorry, I just, I only caught a part of what you said.
Are, are you expecting anybody else from your team to join the Zoom meeting?
No, no, sir, I will be, I'll be presenting, and I have a PowerPoint presentation.
Okay, perfect. The floor is yours, sir?
Thank you, sir. You will have fifteen minutes for your presentation. Let us know when you're ready so we could start the, the time.
Okay, before I do that, can you please tell me, I am going to queue up the PowerPoint presentation?
Yes, sir, go ahead.
And will, will you be allowing me to have control then of the screen?
Yes, sir, you should, if you want to share it.
I have started. Can you see the, the presentation?
No, sir, we, we can't.
Okay, I'm assuming you may be able to...
Yes, sir, now we could see your screen. Are you ready to start your presentation?
Yes, sir, thank you very much.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Uh, good evening. Thank you for this opportunity to present our qualifications for the Architectural and Engineering Professional Services RFQ. My name is Michael Holvar. I'm the senior architect and South Texas Regional Manager for our Building Sciences Division. I office out of far Texas, adjacent to McAllen, Texas. Raba Kissner is one of the largest engineering and architectural firms in the United States. Our firm has been ranked among the top five hundred in engineering news record for the past twenty-five years. We've been in business over fifty years and had a presence in South Texas for over thirty, over thirty years. While we provide both architectural and engineering services in construction, we're often best known for some of our services that are for support, including environmental, construction materials engineering and testing, geotechnical infrastructure, and also for our program and project management. But what we really want to emphasize is our Building Sciences Group, which consists of our Architectural and Forensic Consulting Services Teams. Well, many of the firms that we're presenting tonight are specifically architectural firms. While we are an architectural and engineering firm, I want to let you know that we usually provide services for those very firms as consultants to them to help them achieve their vision. And with our clients, and we have many higher education clients such as Laredo College, we provide services as a full-service consulting firm that does not specialize in building design, but does special... Our Building Sciences Group is comprised of our architectural building envelope consultants and our forensic engineering team. We provide these kinds of services for architectural and engineering firms all over the state of Texas. And our consultants, really what we do is we support consulting for property and facility design and management. Our teams, both of our teams are, are forensics and architectural building envelope consultant teams. Work together on condition assessments, repair, replacement, remediation, design projects. On the architectural side, we often provide full-service architectural building envelope consulting for the design of new remedial roof, wall, and waterproofing systems for our clients. We're often involved in new roofing designs on existing buildings, on retrofits or facades or waterproofing upgrades. We, we do all these services on a regular basis. And we also provide them not only for our clients directly, where we act as the prime design consultant, but also for a number of architectural building consulting firms. For example, one of the firms that you had interviewed tonight, we are currently working with on projects in San Antonio. We're also working with architects out of Corpus Christi, the Valley, on projects where we are providing their building envelope consulting for their architectural design team. We regularly and routinely provide peer reviews for the building envelope systems. And that's become extremely important in the last few years, particularly with the advent of the two thousand fifteen International Building Code and Energy Conservation Code. We've assisted our clients and our architecture clients in navigating the intricacies of the code for compliance for energy consumption and detailing design. We find that we're working with many architecture firms to help keep them from having to suffer the consequences of water intrusion. Water intrusion is, is historically been the largest issue surrounding any types of litigation on projects and consistently ranks at the top of clients dissatisfaction when it comes to the performance of their buildings. So that is the very aspect that we specialize in, and that is to minimize water infiltration, maximize the compliance with the code, and help both our owners and the architects that we work with to have their buildings perform properly and be dry. Our team provides investigation and evaluation services for roofs and wall systems. We routinely do leak investigations and water infiltration testing. For a number of clients, we provide roof asset management through a program that we utilize called Roof Pro. To name a few, we've done that for Texas South Most College. We've done that with Alamo Colleges District most recently. We provide as consultants quality assurance observations and testings of new and replacement building envelope systems for roofs, windows, air barriers, waterproofing, and sealants. We actually perform and can perform with our group the testing that's necessary often to assure that we had proper installation of those systems. On the forensic engineering side of our Building Sciences Group, we look at structural distress investigations, foundation movements. We routinely look into pavement distress investigations. We also do peer reviews for the structural work, just as we do on the architectural building envelope consulting side. And we provide full-service engineering design for remedial structural repairs. Our project team consists of architects, intern architects, registered building envelope consultants, registered technologists for our testing, and also professional engineers. Our proposed team would be led by myself out of our Rio Grande Valley office. And I would utilize the staff that we have both here in the Valley and out of our San Antonio office. While we are not in Laredo, we routinely get to Laredo and do work in Laredo. And our average drive time for us to arrive from either of our offices where we primarily provide our building envelope and building sciences services is between two and a half to three hours. So we can respond quickly, we routinely. We have immense amount of project experience over the years with higher education clients, Alamo Colleges District, Delmar College, Texas A&amp;M, University of Texas, San Antonio, Texas State University, San Houston, Trinity, Texas Tech, Boston Community College, Incarnate Word, Texas State Technical College, University of Houston, Texas A&amp;M Kingsville, Texas A&amp;M San Antonio, UT Health Sciences. We routinely do work for these higher education clients in addition to our K through twelve clients. And over the years, we've, as a firm, worked on hundreds of projects in the Laredo area with Laredo ISD, through TechSDOT in Laredo, Texas A&amp;M International University, the Laredo Housing Authority. We have done two projects, Laredo College, those have been limited to the geotechnical, environmental. So we, we we believe that we can cover quickly any work that we may be able to help Laredo College with in the Laredo area. And again, we're routinely there. I'm currently working on projects in Eagle Pass as well as San Antonio. So Robert Kissner, we like to see ourselves as a local partner to all of the municipalities and districts and higher education institutions within South Texas. We have played a very integral role in the expansion of Rio Grande Valley since nineteen ninety-one. We do have a proven track record with our performances. And we are committed to provide really high-quality and cost-effective services for our clients. That is one thing that we routinely do. We do not simply look at providing a solution that we just provided for another client. We look at the individual needs of all of our clients, what their budgets are, what their timeframes are, and produce solutions for them. One thing that is highlighted, particularly in this time when COVID has really run amok over our supply chains, we've looked very hard and been able to help a number of our clients use alternate systems and materials and techniques in order to keep their projects on track and extremely close to the budget, even though we are seeing right now often cost increases of anywhere between twenty-five to thirty percent on most of our projects. But with research and partnership that we have of all of the manufacturers that we routinely work with, we've been able to use products that we typically might not have considered using because they are not in high demand right now, but can appropriately provide solutions and substitute them within our designs and keep those projects on budget. So just to emphasize, we're always looking out for the best interests of our clients and understand that we all have limited budgets. I really appreciate the opportunity to present, and I'd like to open it back up to you for any questions you may have about our firm.
Thank you, sir. Judge, do you have any questions?
No questions. Thank you very much. Very good presentation, sir.
Thank you.
No questions. Thank you for the presentation.
Thank you, sir, for the presentation. Do you have anything else? And that is it for us.
Okay, I really appreciate it. I know that it's a difficult process and it's late into the evening, so thank you much. And thank you for the opportunity and good evening.
Thank you, sir. You have a great night.
Thank you, Mr. Holvar.
Bye-bye.
Mr. Sepulveda, are you there?
Yes, Mr. Vella, Robert Sepulveda here, present.
Okay. Is anybody else joining you from your team, sir?
There's Sean Rodriguez. And I think Oscar Sepulveda, I'm not sure if Oscar had to run out of a little emergency. I'm not sure if he was able to log in. And Victor Leanda is another of our consultants.
Okay. Okay, Mr. Sepulveda, we're ready. The floor is yours.
Can you let us know when you're ready, Mr. Sepulveda? You have fifteen minutes for your presentation. I don't know if you want to, if it's going to be in a PowerPoint, if you want to start it?
If you can give me thirty seconds of...
Yes, sir, go ahead.
Is Sean Rodriguez with him?
I think so.
Mr. Vella, is Sean Rodriguez with him? Is Sean Rodriguez with him?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay.
He's muted, though.
Yes, I'm here.
Okay, sorry.
Mr. Chairman, we're ready to start.
You're ready. Go ahead, Mr. Sepulveda. You have fifteen minutes for your presentation. Thank you.
Again, thank you so much. We really appreciate the opportunity. I'm Robert Sepulveda from Sepulveda Associates Architects. And with me is my son, Roberto Santiago, a registered architect from our firm here. And of course, well, the slide that we're showing you here, we're located in eighteen twenty Houston, here in the former Dyson Russell residence in the St. Peters Historic District, just across the railroads from where you are, your campus. Our team is composed of a very experienced team that's been working together for approximately eighteen to twenty years on almost every project that we've worked on at Laredo Community College and the other projects that we do around our community and our surrounding area. It's led by, of course, ourselves as project managers and heads. We have Howland Engineering, led by Roberto Martinez and Oscar Sepulveda, who are civil engineers. NRG Engineering, John Rodriguez and Chandra Rodriguez, who take care of all our mechanical, electrical systems. And Synergy Structural Engineering, which is led by Victor Leanda, our local structural engineer. And then others that we use, cons- consultants for technology and security. And then others that may be required for AD, sound, WJHW, the food service consultants, Vanessa Moore and her staff, and of course, Tom O'Connor from O'Connor Engineering here, environmental testing. The mission of our, the firm is that we take a team approach to the design, inviting the client, their staff, to collaborate with our team of designers. And the result is a successful project that honors the owner's budget and vision. We always believe that we take the input that you provide for us and that we really are just the technical people that put it together. It's really your design. Architectural services that we provide are feasibility studies, research, you know, as needed for restoration of historic structures, especially at the college, the design and construction documents, the bidding and negotiation and construction administration, which are the typical services that provide architects provide. We do it, you know, with really good service all these years. We continue with a list of clients that we show you here. The Laredo Community College, again, Laredo College, with over seventy-three projects in our list since nineteen ninety-six that we've been performing services for you all. Other clients that we have here, most of the public entities in our local area, so from Webb County, LISD, you see the number of projects on all the entities that we show you here. And so we're very proud, and it's over seven, nine hundred and forty-five million dollars worth of projects in our twenty-ninth year of service. With that, we have the nineteen ninety-five master plan. We were hired by the Laredo College in nineteen ninety-six to implement the recommendations provided by House Associates, who did a master plan that was finished in nineteen ninety-five. A lot of it had to do with party lots, the northern extension of the campus, and utilities that were involved at that point to do a lot of upgrades. In two thousand and ten, soon before two thousand and ten, we developed the two thousand and ten and twenty, twenty-five master plan that you see here that involved a great deal of projects, including the twenty, in twenty eleven, the board approved at the time, Phase One and Two, and over fifty-five million dollars worth, where we did over twenty-five projects. And soon thereafter, we started working and putting together feasibility studies for the bond package that went out to voters and passed successfully in twenty fourteen for a hundred million dollars. With that, feasibility studies that you see here, master planning that we did for promotional services at the Health Science Center that you just recently, you know, did the ribbon cutting on. The facilities that included also a student union at the time for another feasibility study for part of the promotional work that was needed at the time as it continued. The Yuri Library was soon thereafter another master plan that was developed and from the dreams that we had, from the goals and development of staff, that it showed expansions to the north and to the south, from a forty-five thousand square foot facility to a facility that's now seventy-five thousand square feet, the state of the art. The money, the reality, was a twelve and a half billion dollar project that obviously is a state of the art at this time. We're very proud of the work that we've done with the historic preservation work at the college. Starting right after the turn of the century, two thousand and one, we did a lot of remodeling and rehabilitation work with Texas Historical Mission on a lot of the historic four B buildings that got redone. A transitional building that started in two thousand and ten with a master plan that we did at that point was the Lewis Energy Group Academic Center, a three-story academic and fitness areas that was used as a transitional building to house all of the classrooms and lecture rooms that needed to be remodeled when we started working with the core campus buildings. The jewel of the campus is, in our opinion, the Martinez Fine Arts Building. This was Phase One, two thousand and four, a beautiful design that got WJHW involved with the AD sound system and acoustics. We get compliments all the time of the wonderful facility that the college envisioned and got to build. Phase One included the floor plan that reflects the actual site that we have there, with a lot of arts and studios or so, as you see there. Phase Two then came along a few years later, two thousand and eleven, when we built the Visual and Performing Arts Center that was part of the master plan Phase Two, that got executed, about a nine million dollar facility that included a large sculpture courtyards, dance and music studios, and of course, all sorts of fine arts areas throughout. We then, a few years later after that, we wind up getting the direction to develop the Cosmetology Arts Lab. And of the first, the front portion of this building wind up being remodeled, and we included a brand-new facility that's very successful at this time on it. Then the one-stop shop, a part of the Phase Two master planning that we did, two thousand and fifteen, took the Lerma Pena Building, completely gutted it, went and studied other campuses and saw how one-stop shops worked really well, combined about nine departments in here to create this new facility in two thousand and fifteen that opened up with, it's at the entrance of the campus with a large entrance arch, a welcoming arch and facade to it, responding to the harsh west climate of the campus. The Taisen Student Center, again, another building that was part of Phase Two, got totally gutted, remodeled, expanded in both directions, added a new cafeteria area, food service areas that, again, our consultants were part of it. The next is the, of course, Elfa Lee West Building, the building that you sit right now. As you see this presentation, the boardroom that was added, sorely needed on our campus, you all were in different locations on a yearly basis until this facility got built. All of the administrative areas now are housed in one building here. I'm very proud of that building. The intramural complexes, since nineteen ninety-eight, we were able to work on many projects at the college, develop a master plan that started with a swimming pool complex and then the tennis courts. We then went on to the south campus when you, soon after you did your ribbon cutting, we developed a master plan for the intramural complex and was executed in two thousand and eight and adding soccer fields and the baseball stadium, as you see there. And of course, you have heavily invested in infrastructure, outdoor underground utilities, water, sewer, fire lines, emergency phone systems, camera systems, all of that has been done by our firm. Our team has been heavily involved in all of this, a lot of the work by Howland Engineering and my brother Oscar Sepulveda, who knows the campus just like the back of his hand. Other clients that we have, Laredo ISD, a brand-new elementary school, middle school that we just finished technical drawings, going through the bidding phase at this time, negotiating with a contractor, anywhere between a fifty-three to fifty-eight million dollar of middle school that's being proposed, two hundred and fifty-six thousand square feet on Egido and Lomas de Sur in San Laredo, the relocation of the Cuatín G Cigarroa Middle School to come very soon. The Southern Hotel, a city of Laredo Project, downtown housing is very important. The city's trying to take the lead on that. We developed a feasibility study this past year. We're securing funding from HUD and soon to start, hopefully next year, to start construction of the complete reconstruction of this building or so. We just finished the eight-twenty Convent's Building, which was the old AGNS Building. This is the Fire Administration Building on Delmar Boulevard, a master plan that included the administration area, about fifty thousand square feet, was done for about seven point five billion dollars in two thousand and twelve. And then it was master planned to include the fire station that you see there on the left-hand side, and that was constructed and finished in two thousand and eighteen or so for about three million dollars. The projects that we're very proud of, again, for Webb County, the Webb County Administration, Billy Hall Center, parking garage for about two hundred and seventy-five spaces, and of course, about sixty-five thousand square feet, about eleven or twelve departments there. And it was built in two thousand and one for about fourteen point seven million dollars. Buildings, a learning center. This is an administration building, but it is a learning center that the city had a vision, wanted to have the North Laredo wastewater treatment plant give tours to students and to high schoolers and anyone who's interested to come and see this facility, how the water that's treated, you know, comes out, as you can see there with the fish tank that they have, very large aquarium that's inside the building. Encourage you all to go by to see it, but this is a learning center, as... But this is a learning center as an administration building that we just finished last year. Lamar Middle School, the Phase Two. Phase One was in the early two thousands. Phase Two included the gymnasiums, the tennis courts that you see there, the fieldhouse, the fine arts complex that we have, and of course, the stadium that you see there. The food production centers, we've done two of them, the only ones in Laredo. The one for UISD in nineteen ninety-six, and in two thousand twelve, we were able to finish the one for LISD for about seven million dollars, about twenty-eight thousand square feet. Very complicated equipment, and it's a state-of-the-art at the time. The projects that we're very, very proud of, again, master planning and reconstructing of the two campuses, Christian and Martin High School, for sixty-two million dollars. They all reconstructed over a period of seven, eight years while the students were in use. And so, you see on the left-hand side, twenty or something buildings got down, reduced to about ten, twelve buildings that you see on the right-hand side. Again, Christian with over twenty buildings got reduced to six buildings. Restoration of the historic Christian school from the nineteen twenties, late nineteen twenties or so. Schools that we've done, elementary schools, Sanchez Ocho Elementary School in ACC two thousand and six and two thousand eighteen, respectively. The little rendering that you see there in red is the Zapata Middle School, which was a prototype. That was done in two thousand twelve. In Bruni, we've done the District Auditorium and Science Center that you see here, was done in two thousand one, right before we started the design of the Walupa Martinez Fine Art Center. This is almost a miniature MFA that we see here. It's got all, the only reduction here is the seating capacity, about two-fifty or so that you see. The Bruni Stadium, everybody loves this little stadium there in Bruni, Texas, where the artificial turf is the same turf that the Dallas Cowboys use, and everybody loves it on there. The United Defense School District, about forty-eight projects that we've done for them. And we do a lot of remodeling, additions, wings, the food production center, as I mentioned to you, and then the school at the top left is the new middle school that we've been part of the team in the execution of the work that's ongoing right now. We're very proud of our references. And so, we have here, I think there are ten of them. We're very proud of all the work that we've done. They will vouch for our services, our commitment, our hard work that we do in our community, in our county area. And so, we show them and we'd like to bring them out for everyone's notice. And then last, here, I leave you with this last slide, and I basically say that Sepulveda Associates succeeds from its reputation, not from one project, striving to go beyond the call of service. We feel we're the most qualified team. We know your campus like the back of our hands, like to think of that. We're proud. Many of us are proud, LCC, back-end Laredo Junior College graduates. So, we thank you for the opportunity. We hope that you will give us this opportunity once again to continue to be your architect. We look forward to any questions you might have.
Thank you, Mr. Sepulveda. Judge?
No, not at all.
No questions?
Good presentation, Mr. Sepulveda.
Thank you. Ms. Sepeda, please.
Thank you, Mr. Sepulveda. I have no questions. Great presentation.
Yeah, echoing those sentiments, Mr. Sepeda, great presentation, great work throughout your years. Thank you so much. No questions here? If there's anything you would like to add before we... You have two seconds.
Thank you very much for the opportunity. Again, we're honored that you've given us this opportunity to make this presentation.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a great evening.
Thank you, Mr. Sepulveda.
Thank you, Mr. Vela.
So I believe that consists of all the presentations, Mr. Vela?
That is correct, sir. All the firms have presented.
Okay. Any questions from... So, the process will be, Mr. Vela or Dr. Tejera? Now, how do you wanna handle this? Do we submit the documentations to you?
Yes. Our asking is that you complete the evaluator's score sheet for each particular firm, and we'll go ahead and gather them, we'll tabulate them, and then present the scores at the Thursday.
Are you requesting we do that today or submit them via email this evening? What would you like, Mr. Vela, Dr. Tejera?
If you require more time, we could submit them on Wednesday.
Not really. I'm ready.
I'm ready.
I am ready.
You're ready?
Actually, I did my homework.
Yeah, I did too. I have mine ready.
Okay.
Do you wanna go ahead and check Mr. Delgados?
Sure.
No, he was missing two.
We have, we have.
So we will be submitting for Thursday's meeting. Am I correct?
Yes, we'll go ahead and tabulate the results and present to the homework.
That's it for item number three. Item number four, Dr. Tejera?
Yes, Mr. Sepeda will present a status on the renovations of the parking lots for both campuses.
Thank you. Mr. Sepeda?
Marlon Sepeda for the record, Director of Plan Operations and Maintenance. We completed all of the paperwork to put out a RFP for the paving project. This involves a rigorous amount of scope and specs for both campuses. And we sent out the RFP to five companies on Tuesday, or yesterday, actually, or yesterday. And we're having, we're inviting all the contractors that are interested for November third Contractors Meeting, with the bids due on November tenth. So, that's what the status is right now.
So we have no idea the length of the project yet until they submit?
Yes. We, I think it needs to be done in like two phases because of the project work going on in the south campus. This campus, we're gonna go ahead and complete whatever we need to do here. But in the south, since we got the diesel expansion as well as the trucking pad, we'll probably delay that a little bit. But this should not take more than... We catch a good weather and everything, probably six months at the outside. We're asking them to rigorously look at all of the issues that we have. We have cracking, we have aging asphalt, we have entrances to parking lots, there's potholes. And so, we're asking them to look comprehensively at every aspect of our parking. Then, we're asking them to do the striping as well, the different colors, you know, the yellows, red, you know, parking stalls kind of thing. So, we're hoping to have, you know, these five contractors that we picked or, you know, been around, done a lot of work around town, and they come highly rated, so...
We are taking into account if we have to throw certain different type of either asphalt or cement based on...
Yeah, that's...
That's gonna be a process that they'll be able to provide information, that they recommend either concrete or asphalt, whatever it might be. Am I correct?
We usually try to, in entrances to parking lots where there's a change in elevation or something in the, there's a lot of bouncing going on by cars, so we get a lot of potholes. So what we have done as a physical plant, we've put a strip of concrete to, you know, from one area to another, like a street into a parking lot. So we suggested that as well. And also, we've suggested in our specs that potholes need to be cut out a certain way, not the pothole patrol kind of people. We need to cut them out, you know, one foot away from the pothole, go down to the base, and if there is not enough of a base, they need to add a base, a certain, you know, spec level of aggregate. So, we're hoping that with all this guidance we gave them, that we get a... And we'll analyze the bids and see who, well, price-wise, but as well, what they're gonna bring to the table. So, that's...
And on that note, I know, last time, I'll wait for our president. We had a, I believe you mentioned that you had a meeting, or like there was a meeting with the, for this road right here at the entrance?
Yes.
Are they gonna, is the city gonna participate in any way?
Alisa Cigarroa is speaking with Mr. Sepeda.
But is, are they gonna, are they gonna be parti... You don't know, like if they are?
I spoke to him, and I told him that when we get the bids in and when we select the contractor, that we're gonna talk, meet again about what their areas that I think...
Because that's my question. What is their percentage, or are they, are they putting in any money for that particular road? That I do understand that we take a lot of participation into it, but then we have to consider that, you know, we have a subdivision that uses that particular road at a daily basis. So, are they taking any...
They were open to it. They didn't commit. They didn't... I spoke to Alisa Cigarroa and the assistant city manager, Raoul, or...
Sulemia.
Sulemia.
And they said that they would be willing to look at it. The major street is the one when you keep going straight and then go into the neighborhood and the side here. And that's the one that basically everybody uses.
Exactly.
And it's not in that bad a shape, but if we're gonna do a complete overhaul of ours, we want that one done too. The other one that gets done, used a lot, is the one that goes out, you know...
Towards the back end?
Right. What's the name of the street that's coming into the junk place?
Yeah, the one that, yeah. It gets used a lot because of the train.
It's the one by the South Texas Food Bank. That's all I know.
Yeah.
Santa Isabel. I believe so. I mean, I do understand that they might not, you know, pave it all, but at least, you know, to a certain extent.
At least what, I think that they were open to sitting down with us, and we'll show them the specs. And once we have a contractor in place, maybe they can use them as well, you know, sponsored by the city, to kind of fix things that...
Have we asked, in speaking with the city on that end, have we asked them on the, on the south side campus being that, I know that el metro buses, you know, circulate within the south campus?
Well, the south campus really doesn't have any city streets going through ours, through the campus.
No, but they circulate around that main campus.
Yeah. I talked to them about that as well. You know, maybe the sidewalks, curbs or something that go into the, into our campus, that they could address some of that.
Okay.
Yeah.
I know Councilman Mercurio Martinez did some improvements on Lopez de Vega. They got it stripped and labeled, I mean, the yellow lines and everything. Because Lopez de Vega used not have anything. But Councilman Martinez has worked on it.
Well, like I said, they were very open to working with us, because we told them that we're gonna invest quite a bit of money, probably, to upgrade all of our parking areas and, you know, streets and the campus and everything. So, they were, we're hoping that Ms. Cigarroa kinda exert some influence there with the name.
Yes. All right. And you're gonna be meeting with them, and then they'll be submitting their bids?
We're gonna have a Contractors Meeting on the third, and then the bids are due at three fifteen on the tenth.
The tenth. And the people that you're meeting with, they're a total of, you said, five vendors?
There's, yeah, there's five of them that have shown interest. So, hopefully, we, when they see, one thing is they're interested, one thing is another, when they see the proposal and what they need to do. So, all of them, I've seen all of them working around Laredo with major jobs. So, you know, there's a lot of little ones that we didn't consider, but these three.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Sepeda. Any questions, Ms. Sepeda?
I don't have any.
Judge?
I don't have any. Thank you.
Okay. Dr. Martínez, anything? No? Okay. Motion to adjourn?
To move.
To move, second.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. And it is exactly seven thirty-six. Thank you all for being here in the building committee meeting.
Thank you, Chairman. I'll head.